We're going to call me in order, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Member Steele?
Here.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick is absent. Member Lampard?
Right.
Member Holbrook?
Present.
Member Dean?
Here.
Member Lake?
Here. Thank you. Next, we have a request for public participation forms. I have one. Ms. Robb, you're up.
I have talked to Mr. Kumar and, I'm sorry, your name?
Mrs. Fleming.
Mrs. Fleming, and I've discussed it with them, so I'm uncomfortable to...
You're done talking?
I'm done talking. You told me to talk to them and so...
You get three minutes.
You get to go home three minutes early.
Put it in or something.
Sorry.
Can you sing Jingle Bell?
I got a little bit of a...
You don't have to stay for the meeting.
Nice. Get out of here.
I went through all that mental trauma.
I'm sorry.
Keep you on your toes.
Okay.
Let's see, visitors, delegations. Approval of minutes from November 25th. Is there a motion?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, approval of agenda additions and deletions, and we have one addition.
We have two amendments to the agenda that came in under the gun. So first, personnel report on Jefferson's agenda. We'd like to add Dawn Supanowski for Jefferson Intervention Teaching Position pending contract negotiations effective January 6th, and we'd like to add an action item to add the approval of boys volleyball team as a club sport for this spring.
Thank you. All right, the consent agenda, communications. None? Personnel recommendations.
Be it resolved that relative to certified staff recommendations, the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Robert Evans for the science teaching position at Lake Middle School effective January 6th pending background check, Dawn Supanowski for the intervention teaching position at Jefferson Elementary pending contract negotiations effective January 6th, and relative to extra duty recommendations, the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Derek Bean from the 7th grade girls basketball coaching position effective immediately upon board approval.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, would you like to stand up so we can recognize you from now on?
Welcome.
It went from one district to a good district. Finance report. Dr. Ling. All committee reports. We didn't have any.
We...
Oh, no, finance, finance. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I can't read my agenda.
No, your approval of November accounts for payment.
Yeah, finance.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Be it resolved that the following accounts, Claire, for November be approved for payment as follows: general fund accounts in the amount of $2,285,506.61; special revenue accounts in the amount of $268,295.87; and be it resolved that the general fund financial statement be approved as presented.
Thank you very much.
You see how I'm leaving this? Lots of money.
Good one, thank you. Next, we have the exactance and approval of gifts via member Holbrook. Recently, the administration was made aware of the following gifts offered by the donors listed below. Recognition and approval for exceptions of gifts being sought. Union City Community Corral, new performance risers and $624.90 monetary funds for new performance wear to the CHS Choir Program of value of $7,815.30. Branch County Community Foundation Women Who Care Grant, monetary funds for wrestling segments for the LMS Wrestling Program, $500. Colar Elks Club, Seven Stem Bin, Jefferson Elementary, no value listed. Branch County Community Foundation Women Who Care Grant, monetary funds for new performance wear, Colar Choir Boosters, $500. The Tibbetts Opera Foundation and Arts Council, monetary funds, Colar Choir Boosters, $2,000. Additionally, the individuals listed below have received monetary funds from the Good, Better, Best Grant through the Eden Klein Youth and Family Center. Mary Ellen Norris, Colar High School, $350. Chelsea Wilbur, Colar High School, $500. Olivia Cumberworth, Lakeland Elementary, $300. Mary Ellen Snyder and Brian Pritchard, Colar High School, $500. The gracious continued support of the donors listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask the Board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Be it resolved the Board of Education gratefully accepts the gifts as presented and be it further resolved that the letter of appreciation on behalf of the Board be sent to the donors indicated above for the worthwhile and generous gifts. Thank you very much. And as the consent agenda, is there a motion?
So, where?
Why is the Union City Corral giving us those $7,000 instead of giving it to the Union City Schools?
So, the Branch County Community Foundation was approached for money towards new risers by the Music Boosters at the time. The Music Boosters, the new board of the Music Boosters, since there had been turnover, hadn't realized that they hadn't renewed their 501(c)(3) status, so they couldn't donate it to that. But our director of our vocal music program is also the director of the Union City Community Choir, which is a 501(c)(3) entity, so the community foundation made the donation to that and then the Union City Choir Program donated it to the school district.
Okay.
But Union City Community Schools is in Branch County.
Right, part of it.
Yes, large part of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it wasn't the school...
Right, it's a school, it's that foundation.
It was there, yeah, but it was the Union City Community Choir.
It's a nice little solid.
Yeah.
Wow. All right. Did they renew? Pardon?
They are in the process of renewing their 501(c)(3) status.
Is this the foundation?
No, the Music Boosters.
Music Boosters, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have reports, presentations, recommendations, building reports. Anybody wish to add anything to your extensive report in the... No? Okay. How about the Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report? You don't wish to add anything? It was longer than the, what was that thing last month?
Oh!
The developmental or...
School improvement?
School improvement, yes.
Well, you had mentioned you didn't like the brief copy last month, so I thought I'd add a little bit.
So you embellished it. All right. Next, the Board Committee Reports. Finance?
Yeah.
Ron, would you like to read it? That's what I thought you were going to read.
No, go ahead.
We had Claire Jeff and I and Paul have a committee meeting with Rochelle for budget. We discussed the 24-25 budget amendments. Rochelle presented amendments to the 24-25 budget and answered any questions from the committee. We do this three or four times a year to make sure that we're where we think we should be when we are working with a living budget. The committee supported the amendments to go to the Board for approval. We also discussed the Aquatic Center. Superintendent discussed membership fees for the Aquatic Center with the committee, which I think are maybe in your superintendent's...
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, any others? All right, Coach. I'll try to... The Superintendent's Report.
It's been a fast month and I've learned a lot, a lot, but I want to break my report down this month to three things. First, I'd like to publicly address the situation that we had in high school last week with the drain issue. It was a broken pipe to a heating unit in a classroom that backed up water in floor drains. The science classrooms have floor drains in them, like the chemistry room will have an emergency shower if kids get anything on them, and that drains right into the floor. A lot of times, those drains don't get water down in them and get other stuff down in them, and so when water was flowing in there, that backed those pipes up into two classrooms, and there was some bubbling up of dirt and grime, but at no time was there any raw or human sewage or biological hazard. Classes were moved to other areas of the building, library, cafeteria, open classrooms, while custodians and maintenance workers worked on the drain issue. After school hours, we brought in a plumber who was coming in again today to make sure that the catch basin that we discovered is there is being attended to. And then also, Dr. Hope was very good in emailing parents and staff on the afternoon of Thursday when we had enough information that we thought it was relevant, and then sent a follow-up out on Friday. Word did get to the Health Department, and I had a very nice conversation with one of the directors from the Health Department and explained what we were doing, and he said that it sounded like we were doing everything that we could and should be doing. So he was just happy to be a part of the conversation, and we included him on the emails that we sent out, and any other health-related emails that we send out, we'll include the Health Department as well. So that was a good learning experience. Grant news, not to toot Mr. Dancer's horn, but one of the grants, there's a local, every year, the Shell gas stations and locally Johnny's markets have a giving at the pump for a month or two at the beginning of the school year. Last year, we brought in just over $600 that we dedicated to the new National Arts Honor Society. This year, we received $2,790 for our district, and we're working on where best to put those funds to a good cause. State transportation reimbursement, this is something that we don't know what we're going to get each year, but this year we received $308,000, which in conversation with members of the Board and with Rochelle, we're looking at two new vans for the district, which we believe is going to cost for the van, 10 passenger vans, through my deal, just about $64,000 each, and that would leave us money for one new bus as well. And then, one of the grants that Mr. Dancer has worked hard on was the Water Management Plan and Filter First Grant, which we have been awarded $225,348 to complete our bottle filling stations, faucet-mounted filters, and replacement cartridges. So that was a lot of work on his part as well as maintenance's part, and so congratulations should go out for that. Had a great meeting with Audrina Hampton, the new director of the Aquatic Center, and to talk about membership fees and bringing those up to where we think we'll be competitive with other aquatic centers, and I've included that in my report. It's not a big change, but she has some really good ideas on how to establish better communications about memberships, encourage more memberships, keeping the punch cards, and we're really going to start trying to advertise for more birthday parties and private use of that center as well. So just wanted to keep you updated on where we were with that.
That's it?
That is all.
Any discussion, I am? Next, we have the action items. Recommendation to amend and approve the 24-25 budgets. The amendments will involve the general fund, the food service fund, the preschool, daycare, and tuition fund, debt service fund, and the sinking fund. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the amendments of the 24-25 general fund budget, food service budget, preschool and daycare tuition budget, debt service budget, and sinking fund budget, is there a motion?
So, support.
Any discussion? Can you highlight any of the big things that happened?
Between any amendments?
Well, it's basically what we were looking at, we didn't know in the original amendment how many students we would have, so the per pupil foundation, even though there wasn't an increase, we were up, I believe it was 62 students from last year, 62 or 67 from last fall, so that would be an increase. Again, we didn't know anything about what the amount would be for the transportation reimbursement, and then individual grants that have come through that were unknown back in June when we established the original budget.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for Rochelle. When do we get our first, after we have our count, how long does it take before we see it from the state to us?
In the state date. Well, typically, it's in November. Like I said, this year, I thought what we initially discussed was what it was going to be, and then Paul and I had some conversations, and I'm like, you're right, that doesn't seem right. They didn't end up putting it in until the December, so we didn't end up getting it, because it has to be audited by the state before they will actually approve it to go into third date payment. So we do the count in October, and then we get audited by the ISD on that count, and then they have to forward it onto the state to be audited. So typically, it's November, but sometimes it can be December, it just depends.
And it's retroactive to August, whatever?
Right.
Yeah, the fall, the fall count is 90% of your per pupil foundation, and that's tied into the previous spring, which is the 10%, but even though our school year goes July to June, per pupil funding goes January to December.
Okay. Roll call, though.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lampard?
Sure.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick is absent. Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation for approval to extend the contract with EnviroClean Services Incorporated for building and cleaning and maintenance. District's one-year contract for custodial services with EnviroClean is effective through December 24th. District administration met with the representatives of EnviroClean to propose entering into a three-year extension, and they came up with the full proposal for increases, I guess it increased every year. Be it resolved the Board of Education approves a three-year contract extension with EnviroClean Services Incorporated for custodial services through December 31st to 27th, as presented with their motion.
It's open. Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. How has their performance been in the last two years?
We've seen increased performance due to increased communication and feedback from the building administration and more open communication between management of EnviroClean and management of the district. So they can't fix what they don't know, and we're improving, letting them know what needs to be attended to.
I don't know if it's improved.
It is improving, yes.
And they're, they think that the salaries are sufficient or they're better and the attention is better or...
Yes.
Yep? Okay. Roll call, though.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick is absent. Member Lampard?
Yep.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the request for Board approval of the National Art Honor Society out-of-state trip to Chicago. Coldwater High School Principal Dr. Stephen Hope and CHS art teacher, NAHS sponsor Chelsea Wilber, and requesting formal Board approval of the out-of-state trip to Chicago Friday, April 25th for students of the National Art Honor Society of Coldwater High School. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the out-of-state trip to Chicago, Illinois for student members of the National Art Society on Friday, April 25th, 2025, as presented. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Your pick, I'm straight. Are they actually going to, are they going to go to the Chicago Art Museum or not? They're not going there?
They're going to the Contemporary Museum of Art and then a couple galleries, but not the Art Institute of Chicago.
Why not?
I think they've been there before. It is a world-class museum, it's a great place. There are lots of things to see in Chicago.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the second reading and adoption of the revised and new policies of the Board that were passed last month. November 25th, 2024, the Board conducted the first reading and revised and new policies in accordance with the federal and state laws. These policies involve conflict of interest, grant funds, internal controls, cash management of grants, cost for principals, procurement, disposition of surplus property, property inventory, employment of personnel in co-curricular and extracurricular activities, opioid antagonists, student accidents, student conduct, artificial intelligence, criminal justice, information security. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the second reading and revise of the new Board policies as submitted and hereby adopted. Is there a motion? Or, is there a motion?
Some more.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. When we revise these, I know they become Board policy, who has the heart and responsibility of putting them on the web and giving them to the...
Neil with us.
Okay, they do it, they'll do it digitally?
Yep, after the Board approves them, then we go through and do a disposition and send that to their production and they approve everything over.
So our link on our website is a link to their...
Their.
And I was going to say Sean had to do it, so it's not...
Roll call, though.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick is absent. Member Lampard?
Yep.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes, motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the Coldwater High School Boys Volleyball Club. Athletic Director Todd Farmer, along with the Coldwater High School teacher Rebecca Heaton, and girls volleyball coaches Joe and Kelsey Plussen are requesting Board approval for the Coldwater High School Boys Volleyball Club. This club will be for male students interested in participating in boys volleyball as a spring sport. Currently, 48 boys have expressed interest in playing volleyball at CHS as a club sport. Be it resolved the Board of Education approved the addition of the Coldwater High School volley, Boys Volleyball Club as presented. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Support.
Any discussion?
I assume they play clubs from other high schools?
So, as I understand it, feel free to correct, there is an organization, MIVCA, that they have until February 3rd or something like that to get enrolled with, and they will be hooked up with those clubs as well as, I just think, any schools that are participating in boys volleyball.
In the spring of '26, it becomes an official MSHA sport.
Yeah, so...
So there'll be no cost to the district?
Not as a club.
Yeah.
So when it becomes not a club, it's going to cost us money?
Then it might cost the district some money.
Do you have any idea how much?
Off the top of my head, no. But what we would want to do, though, is make sure that we can sustain the program for multiple years like we did with bowling and some other sports. So I foresee it being a club sport for at least three years.
Okay. How does transportation for a club sport work?
Parents?
Does it...
Well, parents, but if they're 18, they, some might drive themselves. And what they're going to do is they're just going to start off, just, we're not going to get into a whole lot of games, it's more just trying to develop, to see what's going on. It's really grew out of the Grand Rapids area, and it's grown really fast, and so, but there's some Battle Creek schools and some schools over, I want to say Ann Arbor area, that we would be able to play, so the travel wouldn't be that great.
Are there any other I-8 schools that have boys volleyball?
Harper Creek does, Jackson Northwest does, for sure right now, and I think there'll be others that will follow suit. It's grown very fast.
Cool. How does this mesh with other spring sports?
It's going to be rough.
So what will, the other spring sports that you're looking at for boys are baseball and track.
And golf?
And golf, yeah.
So, I mean, so there'll be some that may take away from some sports, but the kids that have really signed up aren't playing any spring sport right now to begin with. So I think that'll help some things out, and then as that program progresses, we'll see what happens.
Does the school allow students to participate in more than one sport?
Yes.
So you could be on the golf team, the tennis team, and the sprint, and track team, and try to make all those?
You could, yeah, so we do, we allow dual sports, and what we do is we sit down at the beginning of the season, the student athlete has to claim what is their primary sport, and if there's any conflicts, they go to that primary sport. However, if there's some, the big one is really girls soccer and track and field, that we get a lot of dual sports with. And the unfortunate thing sometimes is regionals or the state finals are at the same time as girls soccer districts are, so sometimes the kids have to, they have to make a choice. And if they've already selected that primary sport, now, coaches are pretty good with, you know, let's see what we can do to try and make this work, and sometimes we can and sometimes we can't. Thank you. You're welcome.
What about gym time? The clubs, do they utilize our, the school facilities?
Yeah, so that's going to be the biggest constraint right now for springtime, because we don't know what Mother Nature's going to do, and I shared this with the people that are talking or asking about it, is they won't be able to get in the gyms until probably after seven o'clock at night, just because of, you know, everything starts in springtime, everything's indoors, and, you know, with soccer, track, baseball, softball, tennis, they monopolize, I don't want to say monopolize, but I guess they do monopolize the gym time for the spring, and if the weather's bad, they come back inside, and they already know, they being volleyball, already know that the varsity sports take precedence.
All right, roll call, though.
Member Lampard?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick is absent. Member Lake?
Yes, motion passes. Let's see, action items we have for this evening? I would now like to thank Dr. Lampard for his service on our Board. He's been, you know, very cooperative.
I thought you were going to say, "I've been very cooperative."
No, no, you weren't that.
I tried.
And what I appreciated most was during roll call, it was always "What?" So I'm hoping Mr. Billsborough can come up with some similar response. And this was a box of cookies. I know, I like cookies.
It's chicken.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it very much. Having you on the... The next regular organi... Do you want personal comments?
Yeah.
You got three minutes.
Yeah. No, no. The next regular organizational meeting of the Board of Education will be held Monday, January 27th, 2025, at 6:00 in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located at 401 Salt River Drive in Coldwater. We are now... We are now going to conduct the executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? No, it's a roll call vote. Sorry.
Member Lampard?
Yep.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick is absent. Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes.
We are in closed session.